Call the roll.
Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Ms. McGuinness?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Mr. Green? Mr. Beg?
Here.
Chairman Goodman?
Here. And the first order of business would be the minutes of the December 18, 2019 meeting. Is there a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Will you approve the minutes?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. If we could please call the roll.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. McGuinness?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, as to the second part of the minutes for which I was present and voted.
You won't hear that meeting, will you?
That was the meeting that Mr. Green was, had stepped in, so.
Can I not?
Yes.
Yeah, abstain for that.
Abstain.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And Mr. Beg abstained.
Abstaining.
So Chairman Goodman?
I will vote yes for the part of the meeting that I participated in, and I will abstain on the part that I refuse myself on. Next order of business would be the minutes from the January 15, 2020, meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. If we could please call the roll.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. McGuinness?
Yes.
I'm going to skip Ms. Pacheco because she wasn't here. Mr. Green?
Yes.
And Chairman Goodman?
Yes. Motion carries. So we would then have to call the first order of business for the first application?
The appeal of SD Atelier Architect Agent for variance from Section 220-16 E2, Section 220-53B, and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna as it applies to the property at 2213 Almira Road, Niskiuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to construct a front addition, garage, shed, and front porch partially within a designated front and side yard setback. Section 220-16 E2 states that if 70% or more of the lots on the same side of the street within 500 feet of this lot have buildings on prior to July 1, 1971, then the front setback will be the average setback of those lots. As applied, the average front yard setback along Almira Road is 32 feet. As proposed, the front addition extends to approximately 27 feet from the property line. Therefore, a five-foot front yard setback variance is required. Section 220-53B allows an addition to a non-conforming structure that begin, brings it no nearer to its side than the existing structure or one-half the required distance for the zoning district, whichever is greater. Section 220-13 Schedule IC requires a side yard setback of 15 feet. Since the existing house is only 6.5 feet from the sideline, 7.5 feet becomes the minimum required side setback. As proposed, the front addition will be 5 feet from the sideline. Therefore, a 2.5-foot side yard setback variance is required. 13 notices. Zero responses.
If the applicant could just please state your name and address and your relationship, as well as what the application is, and whatever measures were made to or attempted to mitigate the need for either the size of the variance or a variance at all.
Yeah, my name is Susan Davis. I'm an architect with SD Atelier Architecture, representing Kathleen Rooney, who cannot be here tonight. She's my client. She came to me initially because not only did she desire a little curb appeal for the house, but the more significant issue is the stormwater management and drainage having to do with her driveway. And I tried to clarify that in the application. I have here a picture of, not sure how far you, how.
If you could bring it up, and if you would, do you mind if we keep that picture as part of the record?
I've got a couple others.
Okay.
Showing the existing house. But there's currently a catch basin right in front of the garage door. And I say garage loosely because you can't really even park a car in it. It's a very tight headroom height. The lot is in and of itself standard and very narrow in width. The drainage issue with the catch basin is that it collects the water, brings it into her basement, and then it funnels it back out, which is not an ideal way of dealing with water management at all. So we're currently in the process of working with a site engineer to deal with the water management aspect of it. However, in addressing what she would like to have, which is a way to mitigate the water, she also wants to still regain access down into that space so she can store garbage and a snow blower and a lawnmower. So you're never, ever going to park a vehicle there, but at least to have access to that space underneath her existing house where the driveway pitches down to that stormwater or the catch basin there. So I had initially, and I submitted a, which you should have gotten in your package. And this was an earlier version or rendition of what the front porch would look like. The front porch was added on because right now, currently, and you'll see that on the front, there's really not great. The stairs going up to the front are just, you're just, there's no water protection. You know, you come up and they're eroding away. And she wants to address that as well. So it's not just aesthetically trying to provide curb appeal. It's also dealing with a real serious issue with the water. So the front porch will presumably provide a better appearance and provide better covered protection. The little shed extension that I'm talking about, and it should be in your front elevation, would provide enough to be able to get two small doors to open up with presumably a little ramp to go down into that little space, which is one could call the garage, but it's currently just kind of storage area. But in doing so, we are extending out the front of the house. And in doing the front porch, we're already over whatever a minimum side yard setback is. So being that the fact that the lot is so narrow and width, in terms of alternatives, it would be rather odd to just have a front porch extend over only part of the house. And in fact, the house itself is already non-compliant. So the assumption here is that we're actually making a situation which is not desirable, presumably better, because we are trying to deal with the water issues. That's all I have to say. I don't know if there's any questions.
Part of the reason that you're facing this is that the house is at an angle to the lot, correct? So you're, the corners, but the one back corner is closer to a property line and the opposite front corner is closer to a property line because the house is not situated square with it.
Correct, yes.
So that's creating the problem for you.
Yes, yes.
Laura, I assume that this predates, because it's already, the side yard setback is out of zoning. It predates?
So we currently, just to clarify, have, back at the house to the property line where it currently sits, we're at 6.5 feet. By extending the porch out, we're bringing it out to 5 feet. So it's not severely changing what the existing house currently is. On the other side, we're at 12 feet. And the way the angle of the house works with the property line, we're actually going to be more than 12 feet. So you're right that the house sits askew from the property itself. The property itself is only 54 feet in width. So it's, and then it continue, it kind of funnels back to 37 feet. It's a, it's a deep lot, but it's not very wide. So as in, as is typical in old Niskiuna, there's quaint little homes, and this is one of them, which is, you know, not a large expansion at all. If anything, it's a modest improvement, hopefully, and exterior porch change.
How's the drainage issue being solved by putting the shed in?
Well, that's not actually solving the drainage. The drainage will have to be mitigated. And she hasn't contracted yet with a site engineer, so she's still talking to two people. But the conversations I've had with both of them are that the, right now, the grade pitches down to the garage, to the catch basin. We want to raise the grade up so that it's not pitching down. I mean, code would require that you pitch grade away from a foundation wall anyway. So we are trying to raise the grade up of the driveway. In doing so, we would lose any access presumably if we raised it too high. So by raising the grade out, by bringing the extension of the shed out and raising the grade up a little bit, I told her the most you're going to get is two doors that are probably six foot high, small doors that you could then open up, and then have a slight ramp inside to get access down into her space below the existing house, which would store things. So in and of itself, pulling the shed out and creating it, which by the way, we're not pulling out significantly. We're currently talking about an extension of no more than 5 feet to do this. I can't because of the way the roof pitch works. I mean, that's the most I could pull out to create kind of a bit of a pitch roof that I need. But the point is that if I can pull that out and I can change the way the grade works around it, that would help with the drainage. As far as how we're actually dealing beyond that, I think that's when she's got to bring in somebody who deals with the stormwater management of things.
Mr. Chairman, as I read this, we've got two variances. One that's caused by the corner of the porch, and the second that's caused by the front yard setback because of the addition over the so-called garage. Is that right?
That's my understanding as well.
While we're talking about the 12-foot setback, I don't believe that that's, that's not a variance that's included here on the side, the right side as we look at it. Is that right, Laura?
That's right, because it would actually be seven and a half on that side as well.
Okay, so that would be within.
And we're, and we're at 12 there.
Okay, so we've got the two. Is there a perceived problem? I mean, I know she wants to put in and adjust the doors and the slope, but are we getting the cart before the horse here? I mean, is there a problem with the drainage that might make this not feasible? I mean, are you, is part of this removing the catch basin, still accessing it? What?
We are removing the catch basin. We don't want to continue to have water come into the basement and then send it back out again. So the idea is that we would lose the catch basin, raise the grade up, put in alternative drainage methods around the perimeter, and by extending out, what I'm showing for a structure would allow her to gain access into the garage. I think there are issues that need to be handled simultaneously. So I can't say it's really the cart before the horse. But, you know, in order to get any kind of curb appeal, I said, "Well, it looks to me like we need a variance. Let's see if we get that. And then if we get that approved, then we'll keep going forward with whoever you contract with, with site engineer."
Absolutely understandable. My concern was is, as you know, you grant the variance, it goes with the house. It's forever, and this can't be done because of a problem with the catch basin or the engineering issue that comes up. And that's why my concern is, is that she hasn't, she's got a very good architectural plan, clearly, but she hasn't consulted with us.
Well, she has talked to several different site engineers. It's really hard to find somebody who'll take this on because it's small in scale, but yet sort of commercial in terms of the way it's being handled. So, and it's a little bit outside my wheelhouse when it comes to that. So I've got the concept of what she intends to do, and I've talked to a few folks about it. I think if there is a way to approve contingent upon further drawings of stormwater, that mean, I would assume that would be having to go in front of the town anyway, but.
I'm, I'm not trying to put you in an awkward position. I just, I'm a little hesitant to approve a variance is going to go with this property forever without some kind of, you know, some kind of idea that what she's looking to do with the storm drain is feasible and can be done. I assume that's what you're telling us.
Yeah, because she's got some water issues, and it's coming into her basement. So she has to deal with that. I mean, it's a given that she has to deal with it. And, you know.
Laura, the stormwater issue, the catch basin issue, is that something that she's going to need to bring in front of engineering or somebody with the town?
Yeah, engineering's actually already looked at it preliminarily and discussed what would need to be done to reverse the drainage in that area. They've already looked at the preliminary plans. It doesn't require any board action. It's just an engineering and a building permit review.
Okay.
All right, so I just want to hear the part, what you're asking for here tonight, is how it's going to help you to resolve the situation that you have.
If we.
So the water issue is a different issue to me. But if you're saying what you're building is going to help eliminate the water running through the drainage and so on, can you tell me a little bit about this?
If we are allowed to extend out in the front with the proposed shed addition with the little gable roof coming over it, which will, by the way, direct water away from those doors, number one, that's going to help us move forward with design plans to be able to look at the catch basin and removing it because it's currently in the way of where we want to expand. Secondly, it's going to give her comfort in knowing that this would be allowed by the town to proceed looking into in this direction of moving forward to create access to her storage area and then continue with plans to decide how she's going to redirect the water differently than the catch basin that's there. I also want to say that by extension of the front porch, we are going to be dealing with the fact that right now there's water that's coming down those front stairs, and there's no protection for them. And that water is getting on her foundation wall, which is an old CMU block wall that's cracked. So, you know, I feel like if we could get the permission to at least do this proposal, we'll be in a better place knowing that the town is okay with the approval of a front porch, along with the plans as submitted as we're showing them. So that's how, you know, we take it to a certain level, but we are going to be dovetailed, they are dovetailed together. It's, you know, no question about that.
Okay.
Can you pass the photos back down, please?
Can you tell me if the neighbors have seen the proposal and how the neighbors on either side feel? That's me.
Oh, you're asking me?
Yes.
I have heard nothing from the neighbors. I wish she was here tonight, but she got held up with a work meeting downstate. And I have no, I haven't heard anything negative. Let me just put it that way. I will say that then, and the picture might show, at a neighboring house actually has, if anything, they have water draining onto her property right now because it sits up a little bit. If you're facing the house, the neighbor to the right actually raised it up a little bit. Has a big tree there. So if anything, you know, I think there's, there's conflict there with the fact that they're, they've got water, I don't think intentionally, but it's coming onto her property. So it's just the way it is in a tight neighborhood like that. So I have yet to hear anything negative from the neighbors personally, and I haven't heard anything through her tell me otherwise, unless they're here tonight and I don't know about it, so.
The photo that you have here, how is the porch and the shed, I guess we're calling it, how are those going to be addressed in terms? Are you going to use matching colors or, I mean, what?
No, I think she intends to change the windows out and change some of the materials on the exterior. So we haven't actually gotten that far in the conversation with her, but my proposal was definitely to improve some of the, change out the windows with what's currently there. Right now, it's there, it's vinyl siding and vinyl kind of windows. So not that we're getting into any architectural review per se, but my recommendations would be to go with something that's a clad product, probably for a window company, not a vinyl at all, unless it's a vinyl clad Anderson product, which is fine, but. And as far as materials go, we're looking at a composite fiber cement board with maybe some combination of some materials up in the gable that are different. So I had done this earlier rendering, which kind of showed you what the aesthetics were. And we're changing the color palette, too. So I think we're looking to make some aesthetic improvements, which would hopefully help with some of the, keeping the character of the house, but upgrading some of the materials.
Was the catch basin there when she, I don't know how.
She bought it, and it was there.
Okay.
And she actually said she met with somebody at the town at that time. And, you know, I mean, she, she's owned the house for a while, and I think she, it's been an issue with the water. But I was told by her that the catch basin, it was hard to tie directly into the street because of the way the grade is, if I'm understanding it correctly. So therefore, by raising the grade, we're able to then deal with how we can better tie into the stormwater system.
Just one more thing. I'm looking at the diagram here, and it shows that you have some concrete. Is this going to be something new? Concrete walk, it said?
No, that, that was in my notes. That's existing there. Yeah, no. We didn't get into actually, this, the purpose of what I was trying to indicate here was just the roof lines and how we used an, we used the existing information as we had provided from her to indicate how the roof itself was going to extend out from the existing house. But there would be a walk that would be put in, but it's not indicated on this drawing here. There's currently like a curved concrete walk that comes up, and then you have a series of steps that you go up, and then you're at the front door.
Now, those steps, where do they go to? To the back of the house or the steps you're talking about? Because I see them in that picture you submitted here.
I'm confused.
The steps.
Oh, that just goes up to the side of the house. That's actually a picture standing right in front of the house.
Right.
Looking at the door and showing the catch basin, and that was the point of the picture. Those steps just go up to the side yard, which is to, you know, if you keep going, you'll be going up to the neighbor's property. And that's what I'm saying, that the neighbor is actually at an elevation higher than her driveway is. So there's water that comes off of that slope and down into her driveway into the catch basin.
But the steps you were talking about that were exposed are, go to the front door, correct?
The steps that are, you're shown on the picture here.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody understands.
Yeah, those steps here are the steps that are exposed that I'm talking about, which would get engulfed in a front porch.
Correct.
And then we'd have to, yes, we'd have to then think of a new way that, which I had shown, how the stairs would work with new steps in the drawing that's in your package there.
Right.
Can you help me out? When you're standing on Almira, looking at the front of the house, the neighbor's on the left-hand side, how close is the structure of the neighbor to the area where the application is being made to go from 6.5 to 5 feet?
I have this picture here, but I don't have any information on an additional survey to give you a definitive.
Freddie, you've been there before, right? Just help me out. Is it, we're talking 10 feet, 20 feet, 30 feet?
If I were to look at this and have to put a guess to this, I would say it's at least, at least 25 feet away.
Thank you.
And there's a couple trees that would remain as a barrier, too. So, you know, if the concern here is how invasive is this porch going to be to the adjoining neighbor, I think there's enough of a buffer just with natural landscaping.
An addition to the area that you suggested to the best of your ability. You have space. In other words, you're not moving the porch right up closer to the property line, sticking it in the neighbor, in the neighbor's struck, closer to that structure. There's still that 20 or 25 feet that you're describing, correct?
Well, we have at least 5 feet to the property line. And then on the other side of the property line to that house, I would say is about 20 feet.
Right, thank you.
Has there been any consideration to put a gable over the new stairs at the front of that porch? You described previously that you were putting that little gable over the six-foot doors. Water is part of the issue?
Yeah, no, it was more about just kind of providing covered protection at the door and giving some interest to the front there of the house and dealing with the water that's now coming into the foundation wall. I think if we were to consider another gable, it would start to be kind of busy with front porch. And it's not even that we can extend the gable out that far without it being a little bit difficult. I think there's, I think that, you know, the issue is more that the stairs that are there now are getting direct, you know, they're getting some direct water on them. They're concrete. They're not really attractive right now. So, you know, we're trying to get, I would love to put the stairs maybe a little bit closer to the driveway. I can't do that. We still have to degrade to deal with. So we've pulled the walkway over, and the stairs are now going to be kind of centered on when you first come up and centered on those windows that are proposed.
Then would there still be gutters on the front edge?
We haven't actually had that conversation, to be quite frank. And I'm okay with gutters, provided people maintain them. But the problem that I run into in this climate with gutters is if there's not heat cables and people don't maintain them, it can be a problem, so.
I'm going to ask because of the water issue that seems to be prevalent.
Yeah, I would imagine in this case, gutters would probably be a good idea. They're not indicated on my sketch, but I will say that we're at a preliminary phase right now where I was brought in as a consultant to help out with some ideas. And I started looking into it, and I said, "You know, it looks like you're going to need a variance, so let's try to go through that process and then decide beyond that where we're going" with full construction drawings. So we don't have full construction drawings yet, so some of these details get flushed out when we're into that phase.
Other questions from the board? Anything you wish to add?
No, I mean, I would just hope that the board would be supportive of the application and allow us to proceed forward, giving the client comfort knowing that at least this hurdle is overcome. And now we can continue forward with hiring somebody on a site engineering level to help with real answers to how we're dealing with the stormwater.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against the application? Hearing none. Anyone on the board wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that we grant, I'm going to deal with both the variances at the same time. I'm going to move that we grant the variances as requested. I don't find, given the nature of the configuration of this lot, long, narrow lot, the house is at an angle. I don't find that this is really a substantial variance. Certainly, the, the house as it sits is non-conforming, but it predates the zoning code. We're looking at essentially another foot and a half from where it exists now along the property line. And then we've got a five, five-foot variance from the setback. I think without a doubt, taking these renderings at their face value, that it's going to be an improvement, at least for this property, and I would think for the neighborhood in general. Environmentally, I can see, at least from her perspective, given the fact that she's inherited the catch basin and a water problem. Hopefully, she can address those and deal with those with an engineer. But I think that, at least aesthetically, it's going to, it's going to improve the house. Given the small nature of the lot, I'm not quite sure how she would achieve this without. She's certainly on one side, well within the side yard setback as it is. So I, I think for her to achieve this, I don't know how else she would do it. For those reasons, I move that we grant both variances.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
I second the motion, Mr. Chairman, for all the reasons stated by Mr. Frary. And also, I'd like to add that I think this is going to enhance the situation for this house, and it looks like Ms. Davis is doing a good job here trying to eliminate the drainage. And hopefully, the, all these changes will allow for more solution for all these problems with the water.
Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, if we could please call the roll?
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons that have been previously stated, I will also vote yes. I want to thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate your coming in.
All right. Thank you.
If we could call the next case, please?
Appeal of William Stein for a variance from Section 220-18A2 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 1180 Regent Street, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district, to maintain an eight-foot by 15-foot shed partially within a designated front yard. The property is located, is a corner lot, and as defined, has front yards along Regent Street and the plaza. Section 220-18A states, except otherwise specified in this chapter, accessory structures are not permitted in the front yard of any lot. As constructed, the shed is located in the front yard. Therefore, a variance from this section is required. Fifteen notices were sent out, one response, and the response is from 1165 Regent Street. We live directly across the street from the above-referenced shed. We have no objection to the variance that is being requested. We very much support Mr. Stein's appeal application and urge the board to grant the variance.
Sir, if you could please just state your name, address your application, the reasons for it, what measures you took to mitigate the need for a variance?
Yeah, my name is William Stein. I live at 1180 Regent Street. I purchased the property in August of last year. When I purchased the property, there was a previous, there's a foundation in the side yard, because as the property is laid out, there's actually no rear yard. My rear yard goes right into the next-door neighbor's. It's only about a foot behind my house before his property line. So in my side yard, there is a torn-down garage foundation that's been left behind, and it's in a couple of different levels when I bought the property. I put the shed on, on one portion of that, that foundation where the garage used to be. The reason I had, I bought the shed and put it up right away is because I was moving into the property, and it has a substantial front lawn, because the house is pushed against the back part of the property. The front lawn, it wraps around both the Regent and the plaza, and it requires a lot of maintenance. So I have lawn mowers, snow blowers, things like that. So I needed a place to put them, and not having a garage or any external place to store them, I put the shed up. Only afterwards did I find out that I needed a permit and needed a variance for this, so here I am. As it currently stands now, I spoke with the engineer when I tried to get the building permit, and he suggested a few things about turning it sideways and things like that. Unfortunately, due to the way the previous garage foundation is, turning it is not really feasible because of the different levels of ground that are in that area, and the shed being an eight by 15, it's, it's not exactly super easy to, to move. Otherwise, it does give me a little bit of privacy as, as well on that side, because I do live on a corner lot and have no backyard. My side yard, it provides about 15 feet, you know, of blockage from visibility from being just kind of wide out in the open.
And without this shed, you have nowhere to put snow blowers or lawn mowers?
Nothing like that, no.
And is it possible to have it further back so that it doesn't need a variance?
No, if I go any further back, it'll be pushing up against the property line in the back, because that side of the property is only 23 feet long. So to put a 15-foot shed there is already kind of pushing at, at both sides.
What's the size of the former garage concrete pad?
I haven't measured it. I would say 20 by 20, at least.
And what's the size, the footprint of the size of the shed?
Eight by 15. It's a plastic, snapped-together type of structure.
So what you're going, what you're asking is to put the shed on a garage footprint, and the shed is smaller than the garage footprint that is there, correct?
Correct, yeah. My plan is, in, hopefully in the next year or so, is to smooth out the rest of the garage and maybe put like a table and chairs on it so that we can actually use our yard more. Because this area, it doesn't have, it's a very, it's a hard area for yard. There's, it's all front yard, basically.
Is the shed already up?
The shed is already up, yeah. I put it up within three days of closing on the home.
And do, how long have you been at the, been at the property?
I bought it August 19th, and I moved in September 1st.
Okay. When you were looking at the, looking at the house, there was no garage there. It had already been torn down.
Yeah, to my understanding is that the previous purchase, interested buyer had fallen through because it wouldn't pass an FHA inspection, so they tore it down. From talking to my neighbors, they said it was in pretty rough shape. So the seller tore it down, and in the process of the town trying to close out that building permit, they discovered, they saw the shed and, and let me know that I needed a permit for it.
Any indication that, that there was any kind of variance granted for the, for the garage that previously was on the property?
Based on the age, I'm guessing it was built with the house.
Predated zoning?
Predated zoning.
Well, if he's putting the shed on the footprint of the garage, the predated zoning, why would he need a variance?
It's not on the exact same footprint.
Yeah, I mean, it is smaller, but it might.
Come on, guys.
Well, I think that may be the reason, though. It's not the exact same.
I have photos of it, too, on my phone. It, it doesn't even really appear to be in the front yard, although I think it's something to do with the way Regent Street kind of curves at the corner.
This is going well for you, so hang on here, okay? This is something you just want to ride out, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, so back to my question. If he was going to rebuild on the exact same footprint a garage, he wouldn't need a variance because of predate zone?
Right, yeah.
Why in the world would he need a variance if it sits within the footprint, but he could build one bigger on the same, on the same footprint?
Yeah, I don't know, maybe if the garage is gone, and then they take out a building permit to put up the shed, I don't know if there's a timeline there, but it's not a direct, like, replacement. You know what I mean?
No.
If the garage is, when.
I, I know what you're saying.
Non-conforming structure is gone, even if you're putting it up where it was before, I don't think you get grandfathered in on a foundation. You know?
I, I understand what you're saying. I, respectfully, I disagree with it, because what I'm saying is, is you had a structure, the predate zoning on that, and, I mean, just because he didn't tear it down, the prior owner before he sold the property did tear it down, but I'm, I'm still not understanding why a variance would be required. But I understand what you're saying. Any other questions from the board?
Well, I got a, I drove by your property. It is a kind of unique on the corner there, and I did see the shed. Now, there's a weight fence. Is that your fence?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just put that up, too.
You just put that up? So, and it looks like to me, and you're not here in front of us because of the fence, so I'm not talking about the fence, but it looks like the garage used to be inside that fence where you put it up?
Yes, sir. In order to have any kind of yard where we could have dogs or kids play, we had, we were trying to fence it in, and as you saw the property, it's hard to figure out an area to fence in that would be reasonable. So we decided to, because we actually have a driveway on the plaza side, so we decided to keep that as the driveway and then just fence in that, the other side.
Okay, so you have a driveway on the other side, on the plaza?
Yes.
Okay, that's your driveway. I saw that. There was a couple of cars parked in. So going back to where the shed, how do you access the shed? Is it from Regent Street, or do you have to go in the back of your yard to access it?
I have two gates, one that's right near the shed that faces out onto Regent Street, and then there's another little gate that you, is just for foot, that goes right up to the front porch.
Okay.
So for the snow blower, I take it out, go out onto Regent Street, and then I usually go all the way around to my driveway.
Okay. And how did you, I know you, you did mention the engineer. How did you come about knowing that you had to come and get a permit?
He, well, they actually came and tagged the house as, when I was moving in. They said, you know, I had to, I had to do something to close out the permit for the garage. And I came into the town and explained, you know, I don't know anything about that because it wasn't my permit. But they also, while they were there, wrote in a little note saying, hey, also the shed needs to be, you know, a permit, so.
Okay, and you right away came to the town and you applied?
Yeah, as soon as I could, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there another garage on the property besides the shed?
No, sir.
There was an open permit for some reason for the?
Demolition of the garage.
I'm sorry?
For the demolition of the garage.
So we had an open town permit for demolition of the garage?
Yeah, I don't know how old that permit was, though.
But it was open.
It was open, yeah, and expiring.
Even more reason that he should be able to build his shed on the footprint.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are always allowed to reverse.
Oh, I know. I, I know. I'm really not giving you a hard time.
Any other questions from the board? Do you have anything you wish to add, sir?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against the application? Hearing none, I would ask if anyone wishes to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion. We approve this variance. It looks to me the, the benefit can't be achieved any other way, and there's no complaint from the neighbors here. So it looks like it used to be a garage there, and now it's a shed, so it's not substantial because it sounds to me the garage was bigger than the shed. The request will have diverse physical environment. It does it, so I don't see any problem with this. Was this alleged difficulty itself created? It was self-created, but again, I have to say, it used to be a garage there, so I'm assuming Mr. Stein just came right away, and when he learned about to build a garage or to build a shed, and he took care of the, the business. So I, I make a motion to approve this.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second for the reasons stated.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll?
Mr. Frary?
I'm going to vote yes. I belong to the two-front yard club. I have two front yards, which creates very unique zoning issues, just forewarning you from this point forward, because you have, and yours is even more unique because you have no backyard. So this is a, the way the property's situated, you have two front yards on, on two very prominent streets and no backyard. I don't see any place that you could put this that, that you weren't going to have some kind of problem. That having been said, and this carries absolutely no weight because it's simply my opinion, I don't think you need a variance, because I think you're placing a, a new structure within an existing structure that predates the zoning ordinance. And on top of that, there's an open town ticket of some undetermined age, but it's still open, that had to be closed for you, and based on those reasons, I think arguably you don't even need a variance. But as far as I'm concerned, you should have one, so I'm voting yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
For the reasons stated, yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons which have previously been stated, I will also vote yes. I want to thank you for your time this evening, sir. Your variance is granted.
Thank you very much.
If we call the next case, please?
Appeal of Jared Haas, agent for a variance from Section 220-16E2 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 2005 Baker Ave, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district, to construct an enclosed front porch partially within its designated front yard. Section 220-16E2 states that if 70% or more of the lots on the same side of the street, within 500 feet of each side of the lot of buildings on prior to July 1, 1971, then the front setback from, then the front setback will be the average setback of these lots. As applied, the average front yard setback along this area of Baker Ave is 35 feet. As proposed, the front addition extends to approximately 29 feet from the property, front property line. Therefore, a six-foot front yard setback variance is required. Ten notices were sent out, zero responses, and everybody has a copy of additional drawings for that.
Sir, if you could please just state your name, address, your relationship to the application, the reasons for the application, and what efforts were made to mitigate the need for a variance or the size of the variance?
My name's Jared Haas. The address is 2005 Baker Avenue. I'm representing Cadi Elots, the homeowner, which is present. She contacted, I'm the contractor. She contacted me, looking at a mudroom on the front of her house. And I went to the, to the town, and they said for the measurements that we were looking for, that it had to have a variance.
How wide is the room you're adding?
It's going to be eight foot wide by six foot. And there's a, currently, there's an existing porch that goes about four foot out, so we're really gaining about two foot, foot and a half, two foot. Existing porch is open, and there's a slate stairway, you know, that's all going to be removed, and we're going to put a new stair, stairs and a stamped concrete.
So you're going to be about two feet closer to the road than it is now?
Yes.
And without the variance, you wouldn't be able to do this at all?
We, we could have it smaller, but she actually already had a, a door, which was the width of, it's in your drawings there, about seven foot, which the front's going to be eight foot wide, and aesthetically, I think it'd be a little more uniform if we added extra two foot out from the house, because the width is going to be eight foot wide, and that's the reason.
What is, what is there now? What, what is currently there?
There's an overhang with some metal railings. I could show you the picture if you, if you need. She has it on the iPad here.
So you're not talking about making it the whole width of the house?
No, it's just that front porch area where the railings are. It's going to be eight foot, and then it's going to go six foot, six foot in. So the area's already being utilized, but we're just going to get a better usage out of it for her family. She's got children, she wants to make a mudroom out of it. You know, it's going to, the door's a beautiful front door, it's a, you can see in, in your drawings there. You know, aesthetically, it's going to, you know, up the value of the property. We're going to put a new roof on it.
On the drawing, it says possible metal roof?
I think they decided against that. They're thinking about, sometimes when you accidentally put the metal and then have the shingles, just to, for some character.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, just, I know, I think you said that it's two feet to the front more?
It's about a foot and a half.
Foot and a half?
Yeah, beyond.
So what, where are you adding this compared to that picture you just showed us?
Right now, the porch comes out about four foot, so the, the actual, it's going to be enclosed porch, obviously, is going to come out.
Right, it's going to be enclosed, but I'm just curious where those two feet is going to be added to. So where, is that wall is going to go on the last steps in there?
Yes.
Okay, that's what.
So the stairs are going to probably be at the end of the existing.
Because this doesn't look like six by eight, so that's why you're saying?
Yes, the width is going to be six, six foot is coming out.
Okay. And then you're going to have a step after that?
There's going to have to be a step out of the house and then to the concrete patio.
Okay, so that's where your two feet, is that step is going to come out, or?
It's going to bring the, because the whole structure's coming out, you know, it's going to be closed off.
Okay, so, so if you're looking at that picture, he lost.
If you could just give your name and address for the record.
My name is Katie Eluz, and I'm the owner at 2005 Baker Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The windows on the front of the house, they're not going to be enclosed. The windows on the front of the house, they're not going to be enclosed in the mudroom?
No.
So, back to the question, the last steps, is that going to be where the door is?
Not even that far, probably in that vicinity, wherever six foot lands.
Between the, between the second step and the last step?
Correct.
Okay, and then you're going to have an additional step going out, and that's where it's going to be another foot or two feet or foot and a half?
No, it's just the structure, like right now, the structure's within.
Right.
So it is structured, picture another foot and a half on the structure, but it's going to be coming straight down.
Yep, I got it, thank you.
And this is so that you, when you walk into the house, you have something before you walk right into the living room?
Right.
In upstate New York. Any other questions from the board?
I just have a quick question. It does mention hardy siding. Is that similar to other structures? And this is kind of a general question to the board as well as the homeowner. Is this similar to what's in the neighborhood?
Hardy, it's just, it's a nice, it's just a, that's what they selected for the siding. Right now, the house is brick, so it's going to go with the, you know, with the brick. It's going to complement each other. And there's some new ones in the area that do have the hardy, and other ones have vinyl siding. It was just their preference that they prefer to hardy.
What is hardy siding?
It's a cement.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against this I would ask if, hearing no one in the audience, I would ask if any board member wishes to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the variance. I don't believe that the benefit can be achieved in any other way feasible. A mudroom needs to be by the front door or a door. I don't believe it's an undesirable change in the neighborhood character or detrimental to nearby properties. Certainly, there are other homes in Old Niskuna that have done that. It is not a substantial variance, and it will not have adverse physical or environmental effects. I don't believe it was self-created, and for those reasons, I make the motion that we approve the variance.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Freary?
I'm going to vote yes. I would state that this particular section of the zoning ordinance is confusing because of the percentages and everything else. I don't think this is going to affect either the neighborhood, or it's not going to have an undesirable effect. I don't find it in the grand scheme of things substantial. And while it may be self-created, it's certainly not determinative of the outcome. And for those reasons and the reasons stated, I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to vote yes, and I think it's a great idea to have the second door when people walk in, so you're not wasting all this heat and so on. But I just have to say, I think it is self-created thing, that's a good thing, so I vote yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated, but I would also address the depiction, given that it was metal roof and that the applicant has stated they will go with shingle roof, so I vote yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons which have been stated, I will vote yes. Your variance application is granted. I want to thank you for taking the time this evening to come out.
Thank you very much.
And if we could call the next matter, please.
The appeal of Ronald Scharf for a variance from Section 220-53A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2764 Troy Schnecki Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district, to construct a 890-square-foot addition to the veterinary practice which exceeds the allowance for non-conforming properties. Section 220-53A states, "A non-conforming building may be structurally altered as long as cumulative alterations do not add more than 10% to the usable floor area of said building or structure as it existed on July 1, 1971. And when a valid zoning and building permit has been obtained, such alteration shall not tend to increase any inherent nuisance, nor shall such alterations violate any provisions of this chapter regarding yards, lot area, or lot coverage for the district in which it was situated, or increase in existing violation of such provision. As proposed, an addition of 890 square feet adds 15% to the square foot total of all existing buildings and adds 31% to the total square of two buildings that are being connected with the addition. Therefore, use variance is required." Fifty-seven notices were sent out. We received responses from between '53 and '54. You've received them, most of those responses in an email, and they're all basically the same.
The, as I read them, and they were basically a template letter, and so I think if we could read one into the record and then read the names of the people who sent in those templates just so that we create the record.
Okay, while Laura's pulling that up, we received a county referral which deferred to local consideration. We received a referral from the planning board. The planning board made the following recommendation: "Effect to the comprehensive plan." The planning board voted 7-0 that there is an effect on the comprehensive plan and that the proposal was not consistent with it. Pages 88 and 89 discuss Troy Road land uses and indicate the town does not want to increase commercial properties on the corridor. Also, page 113 talks about how the town would sustain a residential road corridor plan. Suitability of use, the planning board voted 6-1 that the proposal is suitable for the land. They noted the concern that the precedent for commercial properties on Route 7, but felt the property was unique and the expansion was mitigated by the fact that there was minimum visual change to the property from the Route 7 corridor. The property has a residential appearance, and the addition will maintain this appearance. And the proposal was for modernization rather than expansion of the facility. The planning board noted the criteria that the CAC uses, used in their negative declaration recommendation was important to their decision. The dissenting vote was based strictly upon the percentages. The recommendation, the planning board voted 5-2 in favor of recommending the proposal to the zoning board of appeals to be granted the use variance. The favorable recommendation noted the benefit to the viability of this business and noted there was a minimal impact to the neighborhood. This proposal would potentially mitigate some nuisance because it would allow the facility to keep the animals inside a corridor rather than taking them outside and potentially causing more issues with animals getting free or becoming more agitated. The two dissenting votes were based on the addition being larger than 10% of the existing structure and a request for more due diligence to reduce the impact on such an important residential corridor.
So, yeah, I, each, I did want to note, there are a fair number in the 52 to 54 responses that we received that have modified it, and they all sort of added their own bit and their own personal touch, but the basic form of the letter of support and all that we've received have been letters of support. See, it's, "I am writing to you in support of the Animal Hospital of Niskuna. I have been bringing my pets to this veterinary hospital for 37 years." And then, a lot of times, people would be talking about the years differ and then the different animals that they have brought. "I consider my pets to be part of our family, and their well-being is very important to me and my family. I am very fortunate to have such a dedicated veterinary hospital within our community to provide high-quality care for emergency as well as routine situations. My pet's quality of life has been immensely improved over many years because of the excellent care we get from the Animal Hospital of Niskuna. Dr. Scharf and the staff of the Animal Hospital of Niskuna are and always have been the best. They have provided excellent care and compassion to me and the many pets that I have entrusted to their care. I know that there are only two exam rooms and limited space in the reception area for us and our pets. The hospital was built so many decades ago as a Federicee animal hospital at a time when many fewer dogs and cats received veterinary care. Because of the greater number of pets receiving veterinary care nowadays, this causes crowding at times, which increases the stress and anxiety that a pet experiences. Additional exam rooms and a separate reception area for cats would alleviate a lot of the anxiety that is often felt by a pet coming to the vet as well as their owner. I fully support Dr. Scharf's need to renovate the hospital in order to better meet our pets' modern needs and comfort. Not only is the Animal Hospital of Niskuna so important to the pet population that is served, Dr. Scharf is an involved and important part of our community as well for over a quarter century." And that one was written by Barbara Potenza. We did receive letters of support for Stephen Dandara, 1029 Garner Ave., Joe Martinow, and Incahu Tailing, 169 Charleston Street, Sharon and Matt Cutler, 1405 Fox Hollow Road, Karen Munn's, 837 Red Oak Drive, Kim McClive, 11 Corneille Court, Trish Kraus, 111 and 1/2 Union Street, Jean and Don Tower, 343 Alexander Road, Dorothy Mazarella, 48 Dublin Street, Paul Hank, 723 Hampshire Street, Darcy and Edward Polaski, 141 Simmons Ave., Susan Axelrod, 13 Stony Brook Drive, Lori Jacob, 2 Stage Road, Waterford, Darryl Ostrander, 2755 Troy Road. And then, we received so many letters of support, I apologize, we actually just started doing last names. Barbiero, 699 Maple Lane, Bennett, 1178 Highland Park, Brunner, 849 Worcester Drive, Brown, from 28 Linda Lane, Berger, from 1221 Ferry Road, Busby and Bean, from 221, 2221 Stone Ridge Drive, Cardinal, spoke that he was a resident, I think, for at least 30 years, but he didn't have his address. Carrigan, 1462 Valencia Road, Cooper, 49 Scheleran Drive, Daniels, 291 Tom Street, Elia, 2532 Rosendale Road, Frank, 1102 South Country Club Drive.
Laura, do you have a comprehensive listing of all those names?
Yeah.
Can we just make that part of the record?
Yes, absolutely.
And I would then suggest without objection that all the letters that have been sent in become part of the record.
Yes.
Thank you. You're going to go hor, you're going to go horsing.
I never see you speak that much.
Do we need to also read into the record the SECA review and findings?
No.
No?
But if there's points to it that you want to include in your determination, we can reference them.
Then we have to make, do a vote on the SECA first.
Correct.
Were there any other letters? Were there any letters in opposition or just the letters in support?
Support.
Okay, thank you. So we have to make a determination under SECA.
So I know you guys are getting this kind of late. The zoning board is the lead agency for a use variance, and the CAC, in their recommendation, they spoke at length with the applicant, and they have the 10 criteria that they use to analyze whether or not there's an environmental impact, and, or 11, actually. And they broke out things that they see as small potential impacts that can be mitigated with recommendations. For instance, they do recognize that there's a moderate to large conflict with the adopted land use plan, but they felt that this was mitigated because you couldn't see the building, you couldn't see the addition from the road. The property has a very residential feel, and there's a very low visibility footprint to what's being proposed, and that they felt that the size of the parking lot is actually kind of what regulates the number of customers that are coming. So they felt like any change to the parking should be thoroughly reviewed by the planning board. Those kind of things are in there. But essentially, their recommendation is to do a negative declaration, which I know there's a bunch of you on, a negative declaration means that there would not be a large amount of environmental impacts to the proposal. A positive declaration would mean that there are a lot of impacts to the proposal. And if you guys feel like a positive declaration should be made, at this point, the applicant would pause and then go do more further environmental analysis. If you feel that there's not a whole lot of environmental impacts that need to be discussed, then you could probably do the negative declaration. The CAC included recommendations such as, "The business must remain a veterinary hospital with the same relative activity it has today. The parking lot should not be expanded without site plan approval." That the addition should be aesthetically integrated with the existing structures to help with the neighborhood feel. And it's important addition is that it's far from the road and doesn't affect the visual corridor. And then they referred, "Any tree disturbance to the tree council." The last two points are kind of, I would say, not necessarily that important to include in a SECA determination, but the first three, you might want to consider when you're doing your SECA determination.
My then question would be, if the, one of the recommendations is that it have the same relative activity as it has today, how do we keep track of that and...
Largely, I think through the parking lot, which is the second point. I mean, you can only just have so many people at a business if they don't have cars. Unfortunately, Route 7 isn't a huge walking corridor, so, you know, really probably what's limiting the number of customers is the number of people that can park there at one time. I mean, they did also discuss, but I think it's very difficult, and Alexis can jump in, like, setting limits on the number of dogs that could potentially be boarded at any given time. Like, I think Dr. Scharf, he can jump in here too. Spoke to the CAC that generally doesn't have more than 10 to 15 dogs there at any given time boarded.
That's on the high end.
And that's on the high end. Yeah, I think he said 10 to 12. But you could theoretically put something there saying, you know, that the level of use right now is 15 boarded dogs, something like that.
But would you say that it would capture the CAC's concerns if they just included the second point about the parking lot?
The parking lot.
Because I think the first one, it's a little tricky, and it...
It is tricky.
And also, given the number of letters we've gotten in support and that nobody's characterized this use as a nuisance to the neighborhood, I think it's just cleaner to include the second and third.
Of the parking lot.
Just a point of reference or a point of order, because I think in the time that I've sat on this board, and Mr. Latif or Chairman Goodman might also address this, I've never seen us deal with this, a SECA review with recommendations. Are we adding our recommendations to our, whether we have a positive or negative? Because I haven't seen this before, so.
You...
It has nothing to do with our, with our review of the use variance.
That's correct.
Correct.
It's just because you guys essentially have the most powerful say in the review of this project, that you also make the environmental impact determination. But you...
I'm with you. I just, because we've never dealt with recommendations in a SECA review, at least in the time that I've been on this board, I don't know about...
It's true.
That, I wasn't sure procedurally where it should have been. So you're saying it's in our either positive or negative declaration?
That's right. And you can, and you can just make that declaration and then leave those comments up to the planning board. That's completely within your purview as well. You can make that declaration and deal with them during the review of the use variance, or you can make that declaration with those conditions.
And this is done via a motion for positive or negative declaration?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Having gone through this discussion, does anyone wish to make a motion as to a SECA declaration?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to wade into this, I guess. I'm going to move that we as well have a negative, it's always sounding so bad, that we have a negative declaration. Having read through and spent some time kind of digesting the points that were made by CAC during the review, I think one of probably the most obvious concerns that is shown with this review, as well as we will confront with the use variance, is the concern for the commercial versus residential issue. I think the uniqueness of this particular application and review is that we could do nothing, and this exists in the same format, maybe a little smaller, a little structurally different, but in use, identical. And I think that... And I think that's addressed in, number one, in terms of, in terms of the SEACRA review is that it is the same use that is there currently. I view that as being probably the most obvious, as well as the most, the thing that we're gonna have to address later on in the use variance. I think obviously the folks at CAC are in the best position to make determinations regarding natural resources, environmental impact and whatnot. I don't read anything here, other than possibly the concern about some of the affected trees, et cetera, that are mentioned here. I think that my motion, I would adopt the points that are raised in the SEACRA review, would move that we have a negative declaration. I would certainly endorse and support the fact that this remain in its present occupation as veterinary hospital. The last thing we really want to do, I think, is open the door to different businesses occupying this particular area. It's the uniqueness of this land, its use, and its positioning on Troy Schenectady Road, which makes this essentially, to me, a negative declaration. So hopefully, that's understandable, and for those reasons, Mr. Chairman, I move that this board have a negative declaration for this particular project.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I would ask if we could call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
For the reasons stated, yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, negative declaration.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
I will vote yes on the motion for a negative declaration for the reasons which were stated. So we do have the negative declaration. Now we can move forward with the application. Just state for the record that it sounds like an area variance, because we're talking about how big something can be built, but this does happen to be a use variance, which does have a much different standard of proof under the law than an area variance would. I would ask if the applicant and whoever else is gonna speak can just state your name and address for the record, set forth what the application is, the reason for the application, and what efforts may have been made to mitigate the need for a variance.
Sure. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Losing my voice already. My name is Dave Brennan with the law firm Young Summer Out of Albany. With me tonight is Dr. Scharf, the applicant, and Dominic Arico, who's the project engineer. So you've covered a lot of ground already, to the point of I wasn't sure if I was gonna need to speak at all, because obviously you're quite familiar with this. And as I sit here and I see that the room is still full after your prior three applications, as a land use attorney, and last on the agenda always makes me a little nervous to stand up in the room still full, but having heard about the number of letters of support throughout what sounded like a pretty good cross-section of the streets in the community, I expect that many of the folks here tonight are here in favor of this proposal. But as has been aptly summarized, the proposal is to add 890 square feet of an addition to the property. If you're familiar, as you look from Troy Schenectady Road directly onto the property, the front building, that's front and center, 168 feet back, a significant setback from the road, is what is the reception area and the two exam rooms in the waiting area. And I'm here tonight a little bit on the last minute, as Dr. Scharf called me, as I was in the fire department with him for years, and then it also brought my animals to the hospital. And so what does go on in this facility, if you've ever been inside, is the waiting room is particularly long and narrow, and as you sit there with animals, with a dog at your feet, the next patient comes through, you literally have to reach down and hold your animal tight because the quarters are so tight. And what has happened over time is, Dr. Scharf can speak more eloquently than I can to this, is the facility itself, it was built in 1938, I believe the number was, 36, I apologize, 36, and was built in a different era, a different day and age, when people didn't bring their pets into the vet quite as much, it was more the vet was going out probably for large animals at that time. But the facility doesn't meet current standards of care and what people expect at a veterinary hospital. If you go to other facilities where I've been prior to meeting Dr. Scharf, is the waiting rooms are very large and spacious, everybody has a bench, and you don't have to walk in front of each other and have that sort of problem. There's also only two exam rooms, and so what happens is, as much like at your doctor's office, they like to get you out of the waiting room and into an exam room so you can leisurely read for the next half hour. It would be good to also get the animals out of that waiting room with all the other animals passing by and into a secluded area to let them relax and spread out. And so the reason for all of this is not to, as I sat, I don't know if it was in front of this board, or if it was another thing with Harry's Service Center, is not to expand the business. I don't know, I think he was in front of you, but it was definitely the planning board.
The planning board.
Planning board, I saw that one and sat back. And listen, this isn't a proposal to expand the business by adding two bays for additional mechanics to come and work. This is a modernization of an existing long-term facility in this town, which serves largely the local community, and it's been an asset to this community for nearly a century. And so what happens, though, is, you know, I'm getting a little gray, but the guy standing next to me is a little bit grayer than I am, and he's 65 years old. And at some point, like all of us, Dr. Scharf needs to transition and retire at some point, not anytime soon, but at some point. What happens is when you have a building like this and a practice like this, it becomes, and this, I'm trying to speak to the use variance criteria about the financial hardship, this becomes part and parcel of your retirement, is able to sell your property and transition your practice at some point. And it becomes a business that is not able, doesn't become viable if you don't make updates to make it meet what is the modern quality of care and what people expect in a facility, it becomes non-marketable. And so what's driving this is, Dr. Scharf is looking at himself in the mirror, saying, I'm 65, at some point, I'd like to take a vacation that's more than seven days long in my life, and at some point, I'd like to be able to market this, the business that I've built. And to do that, I need to make a modern nominal addition of about 890 square feet to connect the two buildings and build a couple more exam rooms to let clients in. It's not for the purpose of bringing another vet in, it's not for the purpose of wholesale expanding the number of people that would be coming there. The parking lot, after the proposal, is about the same amount of asphalt, it'll be restripped to modernize the parking. That being said, the majority of the patients, you know, there's drop-offs in the morning, and then there's appointments throughout the day, that's when Troy Schenectady Road, the traffic, as we all know, is worse in the mornings and at the evening commute, but during the day, it's pretty easygoing. So to the extent that we're even more patients during the middle of the day, that's not gonna be an impact on the community. But that is a very quick overview. I don't want to stand up here and speak at length after you've already sat through an hour and 15 minutes, but that is the rationale behind this and the financial reasons. I do, I did look, Mr. Chairman, at the code, and I too was a little perplexed about whether it was actually a use variance or an area variance. I don't want to quibble about that, I think we meet either standard, and certainly by virtue of the fact that the board has seen fit to issue a negative declaration under SEACRA, we're all in agreement that the proposal is of a nominal size, it's not visible from the road, it's not impacting any of the neighbors, it's not changing the character of the community, it's not gonna have an adverse or negative impact on the surrounding environment. And so for all of those reasons, I would request that the variance be granted.
Counsel, you're in the unique position of having 54 and probably four or five times that many people who are supporting this venture, this use variance application, yet you stand before me and say you can't see a reasonable return in its existing structure. It's the conundrum of, you argue one way, but your evidence that you place before us says something different. You say it's not going to add another veterinarian, it's simply gonna alleviate congestion or other things, yet all these very nice folks that appear before us and say, you know, we love this, we want it, are able to deal with it now in its current structure. As you know, I'm sure very well, probably better than I, once this use variance is granted, it will then follow the, you know, and it's not an easy one to understand, but obviously, it's the total square footage which then expands. And then if Dr., I'm sorry, Shaaf?
Scharf.
Sharp, thank you. Dr. Sharp then probably decides to take a well-deserved retirement, where is this town left with, with now a large square footage available for commercial use, not necessarily veterinarian? Where does that leave us?
Sure. I think there's a couple of different answers to that. The primary answer would be that, under your code, it exists, so this is an existing non-conforming use, it was in existence prior to the current iteration of your zoning law, and for that reason, it's granted a constitutional protection to continue. However, your zoning law does circumscribe that, in that it says that if you have a non-conforming use, you're not allowed to change it to another use. And so if the business were to, if we were to come to a time where Dr. Scharf is trying to retire, there is an absolute limit on what could be done next with this property as to where it will go. Because I, you know, I understand what you're saying, I did for a good period of time live in the community, I understand, having sat in a lot of these meetings, the Troy Schenectady Road corridor and its residential nature, I know there's probably maybe just over one handful of uses along that corridor outside of where the border is with Colony that are not residential along that road. But your code already handles that eventuality, which is, and if you were to sell this and not to another vet, what would happen is, they would have to come in here and make the case for a true use variance to change from a veterinary animal hospital to a different use. And at that point, it would be, you know, more of a true use variance description, because we're changing from what was existing prior to the code to a different use.
Let me ask you this question, then. What evidence do we have before us to support criteria, number one, that you can't realize a reasonable return, but for this use variance? What have you presented to this board of a financial nature? And I understand you're kind of late to the game, but what has been presented to this board for us to consider in that regard?
Sure. I'll actually, I'll stop speaking for a moment and ask Dr. Scharf to address that, is that there have been discussions with other vets, professionals, about what, you know, is this marketable to them? And they've said, no, in its current formation, there's not an interest in purchasing the facility because it doesn't meet modern standards. You wouldn't invest that kind of money in buying the property and buying a practice in this configuration, because it's just not where you would invest. And so what happens is, we do have, do I have an appraisal report or real estate professionals? Now, this is really actually within the purview of the veterinary practice, the veterinary professionals have looked at it and said, you know, no, it's not something that we would be interested in buying because it's 86 years old, and it doesn't fit modern criteria, it's not where I would spend my money.
My, are you done?
Well, I was just also gonna say, and also, I think at the same time, I need to hear maybe something about the uniqueness of this for criteria number two. That your hardship is unique?
Sure. I am just, the hardship's unique in the sense of, there are only, I'm gonna say six, I'll see if I can go off the top of my head, non-residential structures or commercial structures. If we exclude the, well, I'll call it Bellevue Women's Hospital, which I'm probably now calling it by the wrong name, but Bellevue Women's Hospital, we all know it by, and the, I wanna call it Clarebridge, which I know it's been renamed, medical facility, which are more medical facilities. You've got Harry's Service Center, you've got the old CT Mail Office Building, you've got the Forester roughly across the street, and you've got, I think, Berger's Farm, whether that's, you consider that commercial or agricultural. So you're really limited to about a handful of commercial properties. So the, where this is unique is, it is the only veterinary practice in the area. It is not capable of, in my mind, being repeated in the sense of the way the property is laid out in its size and putting the structure behind the existing structure so it's not visible, is the uniqueness. And so I'm sensitive, as I suspect the board is, where you're headed with this, is what is the precedential value of this? And I think the precedential value of this is that it is not being offered as an expansion of the business, but rather a modernization. It's not visible, it won't increase traffic, it won't increase revenues, but it is made for patient care. And I'll contrast that to the one that I did sit through with the, I managed to be at a couple meetings watching Harry's Service Center, where if you wanted to put either another building or two more bays on, the neighborhood went ballistic, because what they don't want are two more mechanics running the air wrenches during the day or into the evening. I contrast this and say it's unique in the sense is, none of these changes are perceptible, if there are any changes at all are perceptible to the community, it's all about expanding the existing footprint so that the existing clientele can be better served.
My, where I'm gonna go with this is, I have to fit this in within a statute written by the state legislature, and can only vote for use variance if I can see how it fits in. And follow-up on Mr. Frary, if we're not having any increase in business, then it's difficult to argue that we can't get a reasonable return as it's currently zoned. We don't have any dollars and cents figures in front of us, and although the statute doesn't speak to that directly, the appellate division speaks to that, and says that an unnecessary hardship requires dollars and cents proof that the property cannot yield a reasonable return as currently zoned. And what we have is conclusory that it, we can't sell it. I think data from a business broker, something of that sort, can, would be helpful, as to whether or not it can be marketed, because I do realize that this is a personal service business, and long-term viability requires that it can continue. So saleability obviously is something that we might be able to consider from a reasonable return, but we don't have any evidence to base that on now.
Sure. And that's where I'm a little hung up on the sense of, that this is classified or categorized as a use variance to begin with, because the code section speaks to the fact that it's increasing a non-conforming structure by 10%. So it's, in my mind, it's a dimensional requirement, not a use variance. We're not, the use is there, we're not asking to go from a residential use or residential lot and insert a use that's not in the use table and is not there and existing. So I am struggling with the fact that I, as I prepared for this tonight, didn't want to get into this argument necessarily, but I do actually feel that it's more akin to an area variance, because you're being asked to vary the dimensional requirements. Your code allows these buildings to expand, we're just asking to expand it a greater amount. So that becomes, in my mind, an area variance, not a use variance. The use is already there, we're not asking to provide dollars and cents proof to say that this is a residential lot, we can't use it for residential, so we need to bring it commercial use, and we go through all of the dollars and cents proof. And the cases you're speaking to from the appellate division speak to a true use variance, where we're going, hey, we can't use this property for any of the allowed uses, here's our dollars and cents proof as to that. We're already, the use is already there, we're not arguing about the use, we're arguing about the size.
Right. But Mr. Brennan, you know this is what's in front of us, is a use variance.
No. Well, I would say that what's in front of you is an appeal of a determination by the building department as to their opinion, and as you heard in one of your prior decisions tonight, you're able to reverse that in whole or in part as you see fit. And so my opinion is, our appeal is, I think it's mischaracterized out of the gate. You know, as a community, I think, you know, I could see where, as a community, you think it's better to have, classify this as a use variance, because you box people in more specifically. As a guy standing here representing someone who's looking at this as his, part of his retirement, you know, then you get into this real strange relationship of, I don't think it actually is a use variance, I'd rather see you accept our proof that it's a use variance and move on from that, not quibble over, because I see from the precedent, you're better off as a board saying it's a use variance. I disagree with that, but I'd rather not have that fight, particularly one, not a single person, unless there's someone here who wants to stand up, and I didn't want to monopolize everyone's time tonight. But if. But if there's someone who wants to stand up and complain about the use, I get where boards start digging in, but what I've heard is, we've got, you know, fifty-five people, it sounds like the majority of the room here, saying this buil- business isn't a problem, and building something that is smaller than a single wide, you know, trail or connecting two buildings, that's not visible, isn't gonna be a problem either. So that, that would be my response. If, you know, if you don't see fit to agree with me, then we can always continue this and come back with something, but I don't think that's necessarily where this is at. But I, I see Ms. Kim wants to speak to that.
So I just wanted to know, just for the record, are you, are you suggesting that the applicant wants to change their appeal for appeal for a use variance and switch it to an appeal of the building department's denial on the basis that it was not denied properly as, you know, expanding the use and it should have been analyzed under the criteria of area? Because if so, then we could go through, I don't know if we would need to, would the secret determination then have been unnecessary?
Yeah, but the applicant doesn't have to amend it. I think the zoning board can just, can just, during their review of a case, is allowed to, you know, interpret or direct the building department to do. But I can say, part of the reason that we do determine this as a use variance, and, and Mr. Brennan touched on this, is the precedence for what we've looked at before. So Mario's expanded by more than ten percent, and we classified that as a use variance. And that's just generally the way that we've treated all non-conforming.
Well, even the house, they were gonna make it into a house.
So that's a true use, well, I'm not gonna say true use variance, but that's actually going from residential to commercial, and would require a use variance. But in the past, whenever we've looked at something over ten percent, we've classified it as a use variance, and I guess the only, just, you know, just, the only defense I could say to that is that once it goes over ten percent, it's no longer complying with the code, in which case it was grandfathered in as a.
It was grandfathered in to be used on that square footage for that use.
Right, and so once it goes over ten percent, then potentially that part of the code no longer applies to it, and now you are looking at a true use variance, because once you grant use variance for this property, now you're saying in perpetuity you can have a vet. But he is right in that if the vet tried to sell even to a professional medical office, like a dentist or something, they would not be allowed in, uh, under the R1 zoning.
Because it's a different use.
Just because there's, or two, just because there's commercial, uh, square footage there doesn't mean that it could be converted into anything else, it's.
It can be used only for a veterinarian office.
Yeah. Without another use variance, or it goes back to residential.
Was the building originally built as a veterinary office, or was it a home that was converted?
Originally a veterinary office.
Okay.
The person that is the son of the, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. My predecessor was the nephew of the person that built it in nineteen thirty-six, it was built as a veterinary hospital. You can get much more history from the grandnephew of that person, uh, who is in this room, who will speak later. So he would know more the answers, but I'm pretty sure that it was built as is, as a veterinary hospital.
There was testimony that you had, that you had spoken to other vets about the possibility of selling it, and people wouldn't be interested because of the configuration of the bill, building. Have you ever spoken to a business broker and gotten any kind of evaluation as to the ability to sell this in its current state and how, and how it would affect the marketability if you had that extra space?
I did. I hired a, a veterinary practice broker, we worked together for two years, and I was told, there were big changes going on in the industry, I did not need to be told by the broker to know that. In the last ten years, there was extensive corporatization of the veterinary industry. So there's more and more bigger operations going on, so that a solo practice such as myself is like a dinosaur these days. That was the norm back then. In nineteen thirty-six, in the depression, this was one of the oldest nine veterinary hospitals in the country, I was told by the American Animal Hospital Association. There was very little going on as far as pet veterinary medicine. So most of the dogs and cats in those days were outside the house, catching vermin and mice and guarding the house. And now you talk to a majority of Americans, and they consider their pets to be parts of the family, and those animals that used to be outside of the house are now in the bed, not just in the house. So, these animals get sick, they have an itch, they have a cough, people are not getting sleep, okay? So there's a quality of life issue, not just for the animals, but for the families. And people consider their animals to be extremely important. So, back to the answer, you are not seeing almost any solo practices these days. The business model is much bigger, and it is an economies of scale thing. A solo practice, I have to have all the same equipment that a big operation has. That's how it goes, it's kind of prohibitive, it's hard to make money, and it's hard to keep up with things if you're in a cramped space. So yes, I have been speaking with a broker, yes, we didn't find almost any interest, I shouldn't say almost, we didn't find any interest in a person that would want to buy a practice that had two exam rooms and a cramped reception area, and the cats, what wasn't mentioned before, the cats are in the same cramped space as the dogs. So they're already anxious being in a car going to the vet. There are four to one ratio of dogs getting veterinary care compared to cats, because the cats freak out so much that people can't bear to bring them to the vet. So then to bring them to the vet and stuff them in a cramped area, right close to an idiot dog barking and wagging and jumping around and being curious who's next door to me, et cetera, is very stressful. So it does have a material impact on the amount of veterinary care that cats especially get, but also dogs. There are a lot of dogs that are stressed, and they're more so stressed when they have to be up against other dogs that they don't know. So solo practice is out, two exam rooms would not be bought, and it's not only for the sake of the anxiety reduction, but it is also for the sake of the, um, the workflow of the space. Because even with one veterinarian, just to have two exam rooms is not enough, there's more people and animals in the reception area, there are fewer that can get into their own space and be not quite as anxious and stressed. And so it, the, the, it, it's, a business workflow is a minor compared to not being able to sell the practice. That is the financial hardship. And I've been doing this for thirty-three years in my career, twenty-six at this operation, I have my own shooting match, I'm working six days a week, and I'm sixty-five, and I'm thinking, no one's gonna buy this place, as Dave mentioned, this is a nest egg, this is my nest egg, and to not be able to sell it as it was originally constructed would be a major financial difficulty. So I, yes, I have been told, and not only by that broker, but by my accountant, who has clients who are veterinarians, several clients who are veterinarians, and I've been told that by other professionals as well.
Well, the next question would be, having said that solo practitioners are a thing of the past, even with the extra space, how saleable is it?
Oh, it's much more saleable, because there would be better workflow, there would be more people bringing their animals to a, a reception area waiting room, that's not as stress-inducing for their animals. And I, if I, if I could, I would have, I would get a associate as a half-timer or something to help me not have to work so much, but two exam rooms, if it's not enough for one veterinarian, it's surely not gonna be enough for two. And an extra half-time person was not in addition to what I'm doing, but just to free up time for myself, because I'm tired. So, I'm not sure if that answered your question. I can't speak to how the future use would be, but that is not the intention of what's going, of what we're requesting here.
I know you've got it in, in your app, but could you just give us a nutshell of what you're looking to do, what you would like to do with, with the extra space?
It's, it's fairly simple. The front building is a forty-by-twenty structure, which was, includes the reception area, the waiting area, two exam rooms. Forty feet behind that is what is called the hospital, which is the surgery room, x-ray room, treatment room, my office, and those forty feet are also a little difficult. My predecessor had wanted to connect the buildings partially because it was more dangerous, having to go back and forth to buildings, a dog might get away, or there's inclement weather, and it's a sick animal just had a surgery. So there are other reasons that were not put into the application, but the, the extra exam rooms would help even a solo practitioner, they would help getting a half-time or a full-time associate, though that, that is not the purpose of the request for the application for the eight hundred ninety square feet. So it would be four exam rooms, two of which might be used as exam rooms, one of which is a grieving room after a euthanasia, one of them is a break room for my staff or something other like that, and then an extra waiting room for, a separate waiting room for cats, so they could be nice and quiet, and they don't have to worry about the dogs.
So the, a- as I see it, based on the, the plan that you provided, it's literally constructing a new building which connects two existing separate buildings?
It's a joining of the two buildings, yeah.
Okay. There is a third building on the, in this space, what is that? Is that not part of the hospital?
I could point to the di- to the site plan if you'd like, I'm not sure what third thing you're referring to.
It says existing apartment building.
There's a residence, which was where the original doctor and his family lived, and where me and my family lived for eight years, which is an eighteen-hundred square foot footprint, the upstairs of which was the resident, is the residence, the downstairs of which, the ground floor, is a garage with two double bays, two-thirds of which are used by the business. So that's washer dryer, which are all the time on, that's our riding tractor and equipment, the workbench, the snowblower, et cetera, et cetera, where we keep our prescription food, which takes up a lot of room. So as I said, two-thirds of that ground floor garage are the business, one-third are the tenant, is the tenants who live there where my family and I used to live.
So you, I'm sure you looked at that also as a possible, instead of building a new building, as using that existing space as a possibility for the extra examining room.
I have thought about it, I have not gotten far in terms of engaging people to draw plans, because it's separate, it's apart from the two buildings that were originally constructed to run the veterinary hospital, and I thought maybe it would be good to use office space there, or cat boarding, people do spa-type, you know, con- cat condos and that kind of thing. That's not my major purpose in having the business, to have the offices be that far away, to have, boarding is not my main mission, that's, that's something we do a very little bit of. We do medicine and surgery, and so that extra space, extra building rather, could be incorporated into the building, but, into the business, but it's, it's separate geographically, so to speak. It's kind of apart, and it would be a lot of walking, as far as, it's already a lot of walking going from front building to the hospital, let alone a third building, it would take a ten-minute walk to get from the front of the front building to the east side of that residence.
Okay, thanks. Historically, why have we done these as use variances? Is there anything specific in the code?
No, except the only thing that I can think of is that once you go over the ten percent.
It's a slightly different usage.
Right, so it was non, it was non-conforming and allowed that ten percent, but once you go over that ten percent, then you could theoretically say, okay, well, now it can't be a non-conforming use anymore, now it is a veterinary.
It wasn't being used in that manner at the time.
That's the only thing I think of. I mean, the reason that we denied it as a use variance was precedence, I mean, I also share in the sort of confusion between the area and the use, and the majority of the reason that we denied it on a use variance was precedence, yeah.
That makes sense.
I, I would like to explore the, this, this topic, but what my concern is, is we've got a lot of people who may not wanna sit through that, and maybe we could alleviate the, is it possible to do that in return? Yeah, we can do that. Do you have anything you wish to add at this time, or do you want, because I wanna at some point open the floor to, to public?
I would add something I know very little about precedent, as far as zoning and planning are concerned, it's been an eye-opener. I have a hard time considering that this would be a precedent, because most of the other places are purely commercial, like whether it's the gas station or whatever. This place is delivering healthcare, and it's delivering quality of life to a lot of area families and individuals. And it goes back eighty-four years, and people have grown up, and I have my third generation of people coming to me, I had grandchildren now of people that had grandparents coming to me when I started over a quarter century ago. So it's extremely integrated in, in the community, as well as people coming from way far away. There are people, even in this room, that drive twenty or twenty-five miles or more to get to our animal hospital, because it's hard to give up on someone that's doing a good, what you consider to be a good job for a family member, an animal, even though in an animal. It's like your physician, or your hairdresser, or whatever, you find someone that's good, you don't want to lose them. But it is not purely a commercial structure, yes, we are fee-for-service. I wish there were more people taking advantage of pet health insurance, and I do mention it, to everyone that comes in, however, I'll get to it, I'll get to it, and then you don't get to it until an accident or a sickness happens. But there, people's animals are extremely important to them, and I get very poignant expressions of gratitude for taking care of people's animals, even for euthanases, as weird as that might sound. That's a very sensitive time, and it's a very painful time for people, and so that is an extremely, I wouldn't say life-changing event, but it is a great impact event in a people, in people's and families' lives. So we are, we are giving people the quality of life that they have for their animal, if they were sick, to not be sick, if they had a broken bone, to not have a broken bone, and to stay healthy in the best way possible. So I would say that from a precedent point of view, it's hard for me to understand how that would be considered a precedent.
Thank you. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, if you could just, one, one person was already coming up, so sir, if you could come up and just state your name and address for the record? Nope, somebody behind you.
Thank you, my name is Charlie Federici, my address currently is twenty seven, twenty-four-seventy-five Brookshire Drive, the apartments. I'm commenting from, I think, a unique perspective here. I am a member of the family that owned the practice for sixty of its eighty-four years or thereabouts, and I want to say a few things that are probably more subjective than objective to you. It's a family business, it's a small business, it's not owned by a large corporation somewhere in Texas. This has always been a small business. It's been run by my uncle as a sole practitioner, my father as a sole practitioner after my uncle, and as my father got old and was unable to practice, he looked long and hard for a veterinarian who would take over and keep that tradition of it being a community resource, a small business, something that is built into the community. I think it really is a found, one of the foundations of our community that we have this animal hospital. It has been expanded several times over the years. It was built originally in nineteen thirty-six, was expanded again in thirty-eight, and I believe in nineteen seventy-four with the addition of a new operating room, x-rays, and so on and so forth. There's a lot of technology that takes up a lot of space, and I think increasing it by a small amount, and I see eight hundred and ninety square feet as a small amount, to make the practice safer, to make it easier on families, upon the pets themselves. I worked in that hospital as a child and as a young adult, and I've carried animals from the front office to the back for surgery in zero-degree weather, and it's not pleasant for anybody. And I think having the facility connected together, it just makes sense from all standpoints. Dr. Sharf has taken great pains to make sure that he's continued the legacy of my great uncle and my father in keeping it a residential facility. great uncle and my father, in keeping it a residential facility, yes, it's a commercial building, but it's a professional practice, and it's a piece of the community that I think deserves a lot of attention to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Zonderman, I live at 960 Northumberland Drive, that's in Avon Crest, sort of around the corner and down the street, down Route 7 from where the veterinary place is, I've lived here for 43 years, and for 43 years I have taken my pets to that pet hospital, and I think that performs a service for this community, I don't think it should be judged on the technicalities of a, of a statute, percentages and so forth, it's a hospital, the same way as Bellevue is, we have it, no one's complained about it, the neighbors around aren't complaining about it, the one thing that's more obvious to me is when you drive by on that road, and I don't know how many hundreds of times I've driven by that, going up to Latham from Avon Crest, you look, you look in, you don't see anything going on, they're way back, if there was going to be a problem there, it would be in the rear, you know, line to the next property, nobody's objecting, it's not touching that, it's just a simple thing, and I think we have an obligation here, this would be submitted to a computer and a decision made, no, it's people, it's human beings, and you have to know when you can vary and when it's best for the community, I think I'll leave it at that, and I'm in favor of the petition. One other thing, I've been in there, holding on to my little dog in that waiting room, when there's a cat and another dog, and, believe me, that's not something you want to be doing, and an extra couple of rooms in here would be very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Munsey, I live at 837 Red Oak, and I hope you do read all the letters, because I did write one that was different, so I hope you do get a chance to do that. A couple of things, I am having an issue with it being a use variance as well, I think a use variance is when we turn country gardens from a farm into a house farm, because the people want to retire, and we gave them tons of houses to retire on, that was a real change there, changing open space to a Holocaust memorial is a change in use, this is actually allowing the business to continue a use and kind of get with the century a bit more. The Department of State guidelines for variances for this kind of thing say you really, you're looking to preserve the character of the neighborhood and the health and safety and welfare of the community, I think by not doing this, we're causing a detriment, because so many people depend on this, this, our local hometown vet, and this maintains the character of the neighborhood, it's been in that neighborhood forever, and this allows it to continue, if he retires and nobody comes in, I'm without a vet, then my tax, my money is not going to be spent on somebody who's paying taxes in Niskuna, I'm going to have to go to Colony or Latham to spend my money when it could be spent in my town. So part of the reason I go there is to spend money in my own town, but part of it is because my cats drool a towel's worth on the way, half a mile or so to, to the vet, where they can wait in that room, where a dog sneezes in their crate, and because there's only two waiting, two rooms, they can't calm down, if we could get them into a room, they could chill out, and he can get a heart rate on them, that makes sense. The front office is the same size as my swimming pool, so if you can imagine that space, you know, with the back area, and I'm sending them back to get prescription food, so they got to all put their coats on, because it's pouring rain, now all the more people are waiting in line, so it is a quality of life issue, if we allow this to happen, that improves the quality of life for the people that go there and their pets, and keeps that property in use, I don't see that turning into a residence sitting next to the firehouse, it's a perfect use for that property. So I think it's maintaining a current use, it's allowing to be more modern, it allows for the safety of the employees going back and forth, my vet had, my cat had surgery, came back out half in the anesthesia, freezing cold through the, through the rain, so now, you know, I got to take, the cats now are a mess, they were calmed down in the back, but they have to come outside to come back into the front office where there's a dog waiting for them, right after surgery, so I, I really think that we have to not look at it as a change in use, but an allowance for this use to be safer for everybody involved and for the pets, and, yeah, I think that, that might be it, yeah, and I think, I think they, he won't have a problem selling it if it's a modern thing, that's, like, to me, I, I think that would be a dream spot for somebody who wants to be that kind of vet, they all want to be that kind of vet, but they can't, because there aren't any, isn't any place for them to do it, to have their own practice like that. When my, I had to put the cat down, he, he was in a training session, so he wasn't there, but soon as he got back, they were all on the phone calling me, we heard what happened, we heard what happened, so I actually had to go over there and grieve with them, because I couldn't get it at the big factory vet. So I think this does help our character of the neighborhood, it does help our community, it keeps a taxpayer in the community with a use that is well-established, and if he's allowed to do it, we're going to be able to maintain that use in the community for people that live here, thank you.
I, I just want to let you know that we did receive the letters in advance, and I, I did read all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Dottie Mazarala, I live at 48 Dublin Drive in Niskuna, practically across the street from the practice, so I guess I'd be one of those neighbors who lives quite close, I'm actually a lifelong resident, I'm 50, I remember bringing little birds that fell out of the tree to his father when I was a little girl, and of course, we brought my cats there too, and I moved back, I bought my first house, I should say, in 1994, started bringing my own animals to Dr. Scharf at that point, I'm three houses in, continue to stay in the town, what's attractive to me in the town is, is exactly what the last speaker said, staying in the town, and listening to Dr. Scharf, the research that he's done by speaking to those brokers and things like that, you know what resonates with me, and I think the people in this room, are the research he's done about the animals, how they feel, what's new, what's new, state-of-the-art, that's what I want, I want to stay in my town, I'm going to pay, yes, I'm going to be one of those crazy cat ladies that's going to pay regardless of how much money it is, he can increase his fees, he can do whatever he's going to do, I'm going to pay, I'm going to go to him, and I'm going to go to his staff, but yes, I do know, down the road, although I don't really like it, he may choose to retire, we'll work on that, but I want that caliber of vet, okay, I want someone who's going to do the research, I want someone who is going to read up on every new medical procedure there is out there and bring it to our town, so yes, I want to stay here, I want to have that state-of-the-art facility, I want to have that waiting area so that my, members of my family that are my cats don't feel stressed, so I'm very much in support. I also have to say, my day job, I work for the International Code Council, we produce the building construction codes that, that the town adopts through the state, and any new construction is going to be safer construction, okay, so that's critical to me, so any new triggers, and you're going to be using, since it is, the code is the International Existing Building Code, which is a triggered type code, so any additional construction, any new conditional square footage, is going to trigger additional new construction standards, that's safer, okay, that's what's going to keep costs down, that's going to increase, decrease insurance costs, yes, we are lucky enough to have a fire department next door, but we want to reduce any type of, you know, fire, building class, et cetera, so I'm very happy to see the engineer here, and it's going to be built, built a code which is going to be safer too, so that's important to our town, so thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Robert Cosgrove, I live at 827 Warner Road, right behind the hospital, lived there for 35 years and have never had any issues or any concerns with the hospital, I've known Ron for 25 years as Dr. Scharf, and as a fellow member of Niskuna Fire District, so I know he has the concerns for the district and for Niskuna at heart, and I do believe that you should make the, the variance agree to, to allow him to build, just so that he can have better facilities, like all the other people have said, for the care and well-being of the animals and their owner, owners, thank you.
Good evening, thank you, Glenn Busby, 2221 Stone Ridge Road, I'm here on my behalf, and my wife Margot Bean as well, who's out of town working today, so I've entrusted the care of our family members to Dr. Scharf and his highly-qualified staff for 22 years, a long time, and I've done that because he has a great bedside manner, and we usually refer to that term, speaking of humans, but in this case, I'll use that term in, for our family members that are dogs as well, you know, we've done boarding there, we've done all of our surgeries there, and always have the greatest respect from Dr. Scharf and his staff in the treatment and the care, and especially when it comes time to have a dog euthanized as well, it's always been an excellent experience, I live just two or three miles up Route 7 from him, I pass that facility almost daily, and it sits so far back from Route 7 that, you know, you don't even really see it or recognize it, so I can't imagine why an addition between the two buildings way far back would even be noticeable from the street, I think the only way you'd see the addition is once you're actually into the parking lot, a couple of hundred feet off of Route 7, so I'd just like to make sure everybody understands that I'm highly in supportive of this move, and I'd appreciate your passing it, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Debbie Willey, and I live at 1265 Fox Hollow Road, I've had the privilege of having Dr. Scharf care for the pets in our family for over 25 years, and I believe that he is definitely committed to these two things, excellence and integrity, I believe that people have defined the word excellence as doing the best that you have, or best that you can with whatever you have, and in this small confined space that Dr. Scharf has in those two exam rooms, and the small area of the waiting room, and with the excellent, excellent staff he has, he provides an incredibly wonderful service to this community, a service that I have never, ever doubted his skills and the commitment that he has to providing the best possible care for, for our pets, in terms of his integrity, he definitely does what he says he's going to do all the time, without skipping a beat. I think that we can, I too, I, I, I work in healthcare, so I know nothing about the laws that you all use to make your decisions, I fully admit that, but I do know that in this kind of industry, that you need to, in order for that business to be successful, you need to keep your skills, as well as your equipment, as up-to-date as possible, and I see these improvements that Dr. Scharf wants to do as doing just that, continuing to support his business and continuing to allow him to provide the best care possible. I think that this gentleman has been a part of this community for many, many years, and I'm sad that I had to come here tonight and find out that you were never thinking about retiring, what's that about, but at any rate, that's a little anxiety-producing, but at any rate, I really do hope that you all give this a lot of consideration, and I really think that we need to support this gentleman, because he has been a tremendous asset to our community, and I can't imagine that those of us, those of you who have the power to make these kinds of decisions would not choose to support this, this endeavor, thank you.
Hey, I'm Don Trichet, I'm from Schenectady, New York, so I'm from, out of town, I'm one of those people that make the trip to see Dr. Scharf.
If you could just put your address on the record, please.
Yeah, 414 Oak Ridge, Schenectady, New York, we've taken our dogs and cats to Dr. Scharf for over 20 years, and usually I use Dr. Scharf as an example of the type of care that I wish I got myself, so in other words, when Dr. Scharf does any kind of diagnostic work on my animals, it's not uncommon for me to get a call on a Tuesday or a Wednesday night, 8 o'clock, and have a conversation with him that lasts over an hour, and I'm going through some issues myself, and I hold my doctors to the same standards that they can't come close to holding like he does, so I'm highly in favor of his request, and I hope you take that into consideration.
Susan Axelrod, 13 Stony Brook Drive, I want to just talk about a different angle of this, and that is what Ron and Robin do for the community at large, small business owners support the community, and if someday they do retire, which sounds like will be never, then hopefully whomever replaces him as the small business owner would continue to support the community through philanthropy, through activity, by showing up constantly, being available, as well as, you know, just taking care of our pets, and if this is, based on what I've heard tonight, if this is not allowed to happen, that is in jeopardy, and so small business owners really are the backbone of a community, as they have been here, so I wanted to bring up that aspect as well, thank you.
Hello, my name's Carol Molino, 1375 Row Road, Dr. Scharf has been my vet for 27 years, and I have a perspective, I think, of a small business owner in town, my husband is Kent Molino, we moved from a two-apitory building on the corner of Avon Crest Boulevard and, I hate talking in public, I'm so sorry, and Route 7, to a building on Union Street, to a bigger building on Union Street, and I really want to talk about this succession plan, because, because with such a small practice, it is very difficult to sell, vet school is super expensive, buying a practice is really expensive, I don't think you need to increase your patient base, but you need to operate in a better manner, and I've seen my husband's practice, just, it's less stressful for everyone, the patients, the practitioners, to have bigger space and more space, so please, it'd be a good thing.
Hi, I'm Sherry Lord, I live at 879 Lyshakil Road, this is my sister Andrea, I will say, the veterinary hospital's been part of my family for the last 57 years, when I was a little baby, I remember my mom bringing our dogs there, our cats, and for Doc, you know, I see how the business has grown as far as what Doc is saying, you know, getting too many people in, in a tiny space, he needs that expansion to be able to serve the animals and the people that come to him in a more efficient manner, it's not that he's saying he's going to go, you know, big, but he needs to be more efficient, and, you know, we want to stay with the, somebody that we know and that we trust as a vet, I mean, because, you know, like other speakers have mentioned, you know, our pets are our animal, our family, you know, we want the best for them like we do for you, for you and I, and also I really, and I mean, I live within 500 feet of the veterinary hospital, I've never had a problem, never, you know, really never had any issue, and that's been, and I've been in that house for 57 years, so I, I would be more than in favor of it. Go ahead, Andrea.
You could just state your full name and the address as well.
Sure, my name is Andrea Lord, I live at 33 Willie Street in Albany, and I'm a former employee of Dr. Scharf, I was an employee with him for 26 years, he inherited me when he bought the practice from Dr. Federici, so, you poor thing, so I can speak from an employee perspective, of having a corridor between the two buildings would be amazing, not only because, for animal safety, but also for weather concerns as well, and just the ease of, just going down those steps and going between the two buildings is a pain, and when it's really cold, it's bad, but I think it would be a good thing, obviously, and you never know, I could come back.
Anyone else wish to be heard for or against the application? Would you gentlemen like to add anything, having?
I just wanted to add one thing, I know that we're kind of having a hurdle, and I don't want to engage in any type of result-oriented exercise, but I think you can consider the, you know, the test- result-oriented exercise, but I think you can consider the, you know, the testimony of the people in the room as, you know, when you consider whether or not there was competent evidence to support that there is no reasonable return, if, you know, the variance isn't granted. I think that's something that is definitely could be considered evidentiary in character.
Counsel.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who spent an extended part of your evening tonight joining us. Thank you for coming out. I'd like to thank everyone, and thank this board also for your consideration, your time this evening. And I would agree with Ms. Kim about the evidentiary nature of a licensed professional opining as to the nature of his practice and its salability. And I would be happy to answer if there's any remaining questions or anything that was, came up out of the discussion of the residents and folks, patients who come to the office, if you have any additional questions, or if Dr. Scharf has anything else. But I do think, at this point in time, I feel strongly that we meet the criteria under any standard. I think, you know, I'd be, I think the board would be well-served by granting it as a use variance consistent with what you've done in the past, and I do think we've provided enough and ample information. I think that the precedential value of granting this variance for this specific request is not going to perpetuate itself up and down Troy Schenectady Road. It's an existing building in use that's been there for 86 years, and it's not something, as it was asked of me previously, it's not something that's across the entire, with respect to the, whether we replicate itself, this is not going to replicate itself because it's not consistent throughout the district. There are literally a handful of potentials, and of those, I would pretty easily rule out that any of them have the ability to come and come anywhere close to this sort of facts that we presented tonight. So I would, I sit on the other side where you sit and advise many boards, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, and I try to never put myself in a position of asking for something that I wouldn't be comfortable granting myself. And I do think at this point in time, we've provided ample evidence that this board can proudly show your faces in the community and feel that you've made the correct decision.
Doctor, you said you spoke to your accountant about this?
Yes, I have an accountant who has handled several veterinary practices, including the original emergency clinic, which is 222 Troy Schenectady Road on the other side of Route 9, which used to be the Capital District Animal Emergency Clinic, where I was a board member and for a few years, the president of the board. And the accountant was the accountant for that practice as well. That's where I first became acquainted with him and his skills, and why I hired him, and because, a large part of which is because he has experience with a lot of other veterinary practices, and he has handled transactions and sales of veterinary practices. And he said, "Two exam rooms won't do it," and that was a while ago.
So basically, he opined to you that your business is not salable in the current fashion? And you've also spoken to business brokers?
I had a relationship, I had a business relationship with a veterinary practice broker.
And when was that?
That was from mid-'18 to mid-'19, so it was maybe a little, maybe a year and a quarter.
And he tried to market it for you?
Absolutely.
And what did he tell you with regard to his attempts to market the practice?
He told me that these days, this is a difficult sell, that small practices, a lot of people are getting out of veterinary schools these days with a different practice philosophy or approach to medicine than back in the day. When I got out, I graduated from Cornell in 1985, and I had one foot in the old school and I had one foot in the new school. And the old school was a real, kind of, what did McCain call himself?
Maverick.
A maverick. It was, okay, second. You had to be a maverick, you had to be able to do anything, you had to do anything that came to you through your door, because no one else would be able to. And until 1986, there was no emergency clinic in this area. And so I graduated into a situation where you were where the buck stopped. So if you couldn't fix it, it's a rare individual that would go to Ithaca or New York City to go to a teaching institution or an advanced operation to be able to pursue fixing these somewhat incurable diseases or difficult-to-fix fractures, et cetera. So I liked the challenge at first of being the one, because you've got to be creative, you've got to stretch yourself, you've got to be the problem solver, whereas nowadays, 33 years later, people are coming out of school, they want their benefits, they want their work-life balance, totally understandably, and there are specialists, and there are 24/7 emergency places. So a lot of the people nowadays, they don't want to come out of school and they're going to have a quarter million dollars in debt or more, and have to have, work five, six days a week, get a week or two of vacation a year, not get paid as much as MDs or comparable professionals with comparable training. It's just not the philosophy of people these days to be able to do that. So the thought about coming into a place that would require so much time, so much commitment, so much effort, is not an attractive thing for someone to buy. So yes, I was told by the accountant, I was told by the broker, I kept on asking the broker, "Where is everyone? Where is everyone?" And he would tell me that people are not buying these practices these days. And as I said before, corporatization is what's going on, and I'm a little sad about it, because it removes a lot of the personal aspects of the practice of medicine and surgery for animals. But the corporations could pay more, they can give way more benefits, they take care of a continuing education. There's so much more attractiveness to that for a person coming out in debt, they're being taken care of by the big corporation. They don't want to be the one that everyone relies upon, that they have to be available all the time.
And with this addition, are they telling you that it would become salable?
Yeah, it would have way better chances of becoming salable, absolutely.
And what's the investment to create this addition?
Well, it's 890 square feet, and what is it, $150,000, $200 per square foot? So 990,000, $1.50 or 180,000, something like that?
Equipment.
With that equipment, right. You've got to put the equipment in the exam rooms, that's a good point.
I'm sorry, what's the number?
I'm guessing.
The range is five.
I would say it's 150,000 to 180,000 excluding equipment.
Thank you.
Just to add, it's not just the building, 890, it's the attachment to the existing building, it's utilities that got to be reconnected, roof lines, so there's a lot of work's got to be done to the existing building to connect the new attachment to it, so it's not just, it's a little...
Would it be fair to say that you wouldn't be making this investment if you didn't think that it was now going to make something that is not salable, salable?
Say that again.
Would it be fair to say that you would not be making this investment of $150,000 in the property if you thought that it would take something that's already not able to be sold and still be unable to sell?
No, of course not.
Did they give you any sense of how much you would be able to sell it for in its current, in its current form?
I think that it would be much less than what it would be able to be sold for in a proposed form. How much less that is, I don't know. I would just be guessing, I have to tell you the truth. I have not done a side-by-side comparison of what it would cost. If you have no buyer, then the cost is, then the price is zero.
Right.
Okay? So whatever it is, it's infinitely more than zero, but by a lot, okay? It's a large infinity.
So the rate of return would be substantial with this variance?
Yeah, the rate of return would be substantial.
And you're not able to continue your practice into the indefinite future at your age? There's a finite time that you can continue to practice at your age.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I need a little guidance here from either counsel, or Laura, or yourself. I need to understand if this is not an appropriate use variance, how we proceed procedurally as a board to convert the wrong word, but to proceed as an area variance instead. I need to understand how that's done.
Yeah, if you could speak to that from what the code says.
Well, I would say that the first step would be, someone to make a motion on the board, you know, to proceed as this, as an area variance, that would be the first step if it's seconded. Laura, but I mean, I think that proceeding under the use variance criteria isn't anyone's, to the board's detriment or the applicant's detriment, and it was sort of the beneficial...
It would be the higher standard, yeah.
Yeah, it would be beneficial also to making sure that we're not, you know, like we spoke about Mario's, I'm sure there's other examples.
Right.
We would be baking a departure and making a statement that, from here on out, any, you know, factually similar...
That we would only be able to use area variance, and we would no longer be able to use a use variance, which has been the standard. I know that the appellate division has spoken that you do require some sort of dollars and cents proof. We do have some discussion from the applicant that he has had business brokers and that he's been unable to get any offers at all with... And would that be true, that there's been no offers at all, as opposed to an offer that you weren't interested in?
Almost true.
Almost true?
Pretty close.
Well, with all due respect, this board, when presented with use variance application...
Has always required something...
Can I?
Okay.
Thank you. Has almost exclusively, in my tenure with this board, which is probably the longest other than Mr. Latif, has exclusively required financial information in documentary form, and that's not to lessen what we've heard or to doubt at all your representations. It's just not what this board has required.
We have adjourned the meeting and got them...
As counsel has suggested, we've offered an adjournment for that documentation to be presented. I need to go back to the issue. If this is not, and that is documentation, my understanding is exclusively required for a use variance.
And the appellate division has said that.
Okay, so if I do not think that this is an appropriate use variance, it is more aptly an area variance than, my understanding is to proceed on that, a motion needs to be made that this be approved as an area variance, not a use variance. Is that right, counsel?
Procedurally, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And is there anything in the zoning ordinance that would require this to be a use variance?
No, but Laura could speak to that. I mean, but there's no, there's nothing in the code, it's just been our interpretation.
Well, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, we're saying that it's a use variance because it's going over 10%, and so at that point, it's a use that's not allowed in the zoning district. And then...
If we're going to proceed as area variance, there's another complicated layer would be that we'd have to make a determination, and I spoke to Laura about this, on the correct percentage to be analyzing it on. There was 16% and then 31%. 31% expansion is if we're looking to set the two buildings that are being connected. 16% is if we're including the accessory structures, of the view that it would be 31% because the accessory structures, I mean, just as that, which is fine, we're adding just another layer to it. And I mean, I understand that, is it 3D appellate division saying that we need documentation? I think that, you know, yes, we need proof, but it could, unless we're questioning the veracity of the applicant's, you know...
Guys, we're back to a use variance issue. I'm not on use variance. I want to know how to convert this to an area variance, whether that's A, within my authority as a board, B, if there's anything additional that needs to be done, and how to go about it and do it. We keep flopping back to use. My understanding, based on the criteria and my experiences, financial data is only needed for a use variance. If it is not a use variance, it is not needed.
Correct.
Okay, so let's get back to area variance. Procedurally, how we need to do this, is it simply by a motion? Do we need to deny the use variance and then convert it? Does the applicant need to convert their application? I need to know how to do this.
Yeah, like Ms. Kim was saying, you would essentially make a motion to direct, you know, the building department to, that it is an area variance, that you disagree with the way that the building inspector and the zoning enforcement officer, actually, this one was done by me, that you disagree with the way that I interpreted the code, and that you're directing that is now an area variance. And you would make that motion, and then need a second, and then I guess procedurally from there, we would just make sure that we're dealing with the right percentages for an area variance, with the understanding that if you move this from a use variance to an area variance, that that sets the precedent for how we interpret the code from then there and forth.
But there is a very unique nature, which would be included in my motion, of this particular case, as was Mario's, unlike the midwifery that was being, the application which was withdrawn, but existed for the residents that was on Troy Schenectady Road that there was such an uproar about, that was a different type of use variance.
That's correct.
So it's a very clear delineation of this use variance and Mario's use variance versus, and I love saying the words, so I'll say it again, the midwifery that was an application for a totally different change from residents. So when we say we're setting a precedent, we are setting a very specific, fact-specific precedent of how a use variance is interpreted.
That's definitely correct, but the Harries gas station that Dr. Brennan, or sorry, Councilperson Brennan is referring to was actually also denied on a use variance basis for square footage, for them to be adding bays. It's still the same essential use, but it's increasing the intensity of use. And so maybe that's just something that you would want to look at at the code, it's 10% or an increase in the intensity of use. And when you look at what the pre-existing non-conforming use is doing, how the change in the, how the change that's being proposed is affecting the neighborhood, if the intensity is increasing the use of the non-conforming use, at some point, you probably do want it to trigger a use variance, because you're saying, yeah, you've allowed this expansion, you've allowed this to happen, but at some point, you really need to speak to the use that has been there for 70 years. Like, do you want to continue as that use? Or do you want to say, no, I mean, you can't keep expanding? Like, I think that that's really, you have to figure out where that point is. And you do have other pre-existing non-conforming veterinary practices that this ruling would probably directly relate to on Balltown Road. We've, you know, we've heard things from that previously, so there are, I'd say, implications to whatever motion you make. It definitely goes down the line.
Understood, as is with everything that we do on this board. Six-foot fences and everything else.
Correct.
In front yards. Okay?
Okay.
Are you going to ask me if I want to make a motion?
You want to make a motion?
I was waiting.
Okay.
Let me see if I can cognizantly and succinctly put this into words. Stick with me. I will move that, in my humble estimation, no offense, that this is an inappropriate characterization and an inappropriate application for a use variance. I state that it is because, as we have clearly stated in the negative declaration by the CRC and by this board, this is essentially a business that has operated for, I've lost count how many years we're talking about now, but for many, many, many years as a veterinarian practice, it will continue to operate as a veterinarian practice. And it is not changing use. I understand the, what I consider to be subtle distinction that maybe pieces of the property were not used as a veterinarian practice that will be used, but I think it's a distinction without a difference. I think that because this remains a veterinarian practice, which is simply being expanded, used for the same purpose, used by the same person for operating the same business, that it is more aptly charac- it is more aptly characterized and properly characterized as an area variance. Therefore, I move that this board convert and vote on this particular variance at not as a use variance, but as an area variance, under some very specific and unique facts. Those facts being that it is not a change, it is continued as the same, the same practice, the same veterinarian, the same business. It simply is adding some area to the practice. With that in mind, the reason I am moving that, shall I roll into the why we should vote for an area variance or leave that be for now?
I think we leave that be for now.
Okay, for that reason, I move that we convert this and more appropriately characterize this as an area variance rather than a use variance.
Mr. Ferry, I would ask if you would be willing to include in your motion that the applicant has specifically stated that they are not going to be increasing the use of the building over what they are already doing, it's for flow and not for an increase in business?
I would absolutely agree to that amendment, to my motion, in that the applicant has represented to this board, they are not attempting to increase the flow of traffic, they're not attempting and in fact, taking steps with the conversion of the parking lot or the renovations to the parking lot to keep it a certain restricted size, to not increase that. The applicant has also represented that he is not looking in these, these changes to, to increase the size of the practice, simply may hire a part-time veterinarian to relieve the stress and load on the current veterinarian. I would be more than happy to amend my motion to include those factors.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I will second that motion for all the reasons stated, but especially because it is not a change of use, it's a use that will make the practice more efficient and modern and that the doctor has stated, you know, this is not an expansion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion on the motion?
I've got a question, and it may relate to the later proposed motion. My concern is I interpret the code differently from Mr. Ferry. I, I see it as a use variance technically, by the way that it's written. So I'm concerned about my voting on this motion.
No, you can, you can vote against it.
Yeah, yeah, you vote, you vote as you would read the statute.
Trust me, people have disagreed with me in the past many times.
Even though I agree with.
No, no, I'm just saying, then, then your response would be a no on the motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Is the pending motion, the motion to convert as amended?
As amended.
Thank you, okay. Just wanted to know where I'm going.
Yeah, okay.
I hope you know, I wondered myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ask for a vote?
Mr. Ferry?
Yes, as amended.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, as amended. And just want to add to Mr. Ferry, to clarify, no changes of use in the hospital, I'm going to call it hospital, no adding parking, and it's simply connecting two buildings in the back together. So I vote yes.
Ms. McGuinness?
I vote yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
I vote no for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yeah, this one's been a difficult one for me, but it's been a long game, so I'll keep it short. I'm going to vote yes on the motion to convert as amended.
Mr. Beg?
I'd vote yes with the stipulation that the intensity of use will not change.
Chairman Goodman?
Because if I'm just reading something, I apologize. Based on Section 220.53 subdivision A, I feel constrained to vote no on the motion. But the motion does carry. Motion, we've now changed it to be voted on as an area variance. Does anyone have a motion to be made?
I do. I move that we approve the area variance as amended.
Thank you.
I believe that there are a number of factors, many of which I stated in my negative declaration motion. The major factors are, I view this as a unique property, I pass by this property twice a day at least, and the working pieces of this property are so far off Troy Connected E Road that you barely can figure out how many buildings are back there anyway. I do not view the connecting of the buildings and the addition or the changes to the, to the parking area to be substantial, given the size of this property. I also don't think that it is going to have a negative environmental effect. We've already heard through what is now the unnecessary but informative SIKR review that it does not have, other than possibly some of the tree issues, that it does not have an adverse environmental effect, according to the SIKR review. Is it self-created? Possibly. But I think that the unique nature of what Dr. Sharp has inherited and has been working with over many, many years, I think that this can't be achieved through any other means which are going to eliminate the necessity for a variance. the property itself should and will operate, as I said in my prior motion, as a veterinary practice. It will remain in its current form through its current owner, at least as long as he can, he can stand to work there. And I think by allowing this variance, it will also provide a sustainable future through probably another sole practitioner who has the, hopefully has the same objectives and purposes as its current owner. For all those reasons, I move that we approve the area variance as it's been amended by this board.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion for the reasons stated.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion?
I just have a quick question. In terms of the information provided about the area increase in the building, is there any condition upon it that we should make, limiting them to the area now that it's been decided that the 10% does not apply?
Well, that's something with.
That's what their application is, so that's what they'll be limited to.
Okay, thank you. The amendment will be 890 square feet. Thank you.
I call for a vote?
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to vote yes in, in the way, glad that we moved it from use variance to regular variance. And I want to thank everybody in the public and the loyalty to the doctor here. I never knew you existed down there and I live on Route 7, so, thank you.
Ms. McGuinness?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated, and I do want to state my opinion, I'm also in favor of the project. It was just a hard decision to make.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons that we all love our pets as much as we do our own family and based upon the facts and law that we heard here today.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
I will vote yes now that it is in fact an area variance. Often in these things, we have to view the law, apply the law much as a court applies law. And I, my earlier vote, I was doing that as I believed the law to be. If we were wrong on that, we were wrong on that. It was very limited for precedent value, but it's no longer that, it's an area variance. And as a project, I don't see a problem with it, I see it as an improvement. And sometimes you are constrained in how you vote based on what you view the statutes to be, as opposed to how you might otherwise go. But with the, within the confines of an area variance, for the reasons that were stated, I do believe that it does meet those and I wish you much luck with your endeavors. And I want to thank you, as well as everyone else who came and took the time tonight to talk on this project. Thank you. Any other business to come before the board?
Thank you.
I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Sorry, Chairman, I just wanted to note, for the record, I know I sent this to you in an email, but because of early voting procedures, we had to move the April 22 meeting.
To April 29.
To April 29, just for the record.
Yep. Thank you. Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned until next month. Thank you.
Hey, Katrina, what was the code reference that you?